The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I'd like to welcome you all to our special board meeting for July 11, 2022. Like to call the meeting to order. The first thing we're going to do is roll call. Kinsey?
McCoy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Melz?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Layton and Warren?
I don't think that Laura will be joining us tonight. So there's six of us in attendance. She is excused. We're also joined by our superintendent, Vicky Byer, our ICSC rep, Maisy Saha, and members of the superintendent's cabinet. This is a special board meeting. We're going to take a few votes first. So let's see here. Brian, could you help us with that?
I move that the employment of staff as presented be approved.
Second? Any discussion? Okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. McCoy?
Oh, I voted online.
We have to do voice votes since.
Oh, I'm very sorry. I'm an aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Melz?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with six board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next.
I move that the transfer of staff as presented be approved.
Second? Questions? Kinsey?
McCoy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Melz?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with six board members voting in favor.
Motion carries. Go ahead, Brian.
I move that the termination of staff as presented be approved.
Second? Questions? Go ahead, Kinsey.
McCoy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Melz?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
All votes were entered and the motion carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, that completes our special board meeting. I would, I guess I need to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. I move that we adjourn the special board meeting. Second? I think it's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Okay. We're back. This now begins the, our work session for July 11, 2022. The, we've already taken roll call. So the next thing we're going to do is, if there anyone, Kinsey, has anyone wanted to be in, participate in a public forum? Okay, and so we're going to move on to the education committee and that will be handled by Andrew Becker.
All right, thank you. We have two items on the education agenda. And the first one is a, first one is a curiover. It's required annual posting of standards. Is there any, any presentation or information to present?
There, there isn't, Mr. Becker, other than recognizing again that this is a statutory requirement in the state of Wisconsin. Dr. Shartier is here and available if there are any questions. Otherwise, no action required.
Sorry, sorry.
Questions? Okay, and then we will move ahead to the NEW partnership with NWTC. And we do have a presentation for that by Principal Jason Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. We are joined by Jason Johnson, who oversees our School of Innovation, NEW School of Innovation. And we thought this might be a good opportunity to come to the board and highlight the transition of that school over to NWTC and the partnership we've developed with them over the years. Mr. Johnson?
All right. Thank you for this opportunity to meet with you. Please know that you'll all get an invitation after next Friday when we move some boxes and some furniture and get settled. We'd all like you to come out and see our new setup there. Just a little background, because I know there's some of you I haven't really met yet. The academy, which is our original program, was a pilot program started in 2015. We were two teachers in a classroom at Manoka Hill. And in that year, we served 62 students, 59 of which ended up graduating from high school. The original purpose of that program was designed to meet the needs of 12th graders who are new to our district, who had never attended there. But we quickly learned that that's not who we were serving. We were serving students that have been in our school district since third or fifth grade. And since then, we've now enrolled 1,001 students in our academy program. We have about an approximate 80% graduation rate, working with only students who weren't going to graduate from high school. So we're very proud of the efforts we have and the support we've been given from the district to make these things happen. As we learned through that process, in 2018, we were provided an opportunity to apply for Wisconsin Charter School Grant. It was a federal program in which $90, $95 million was given to Wisconsin. We received just under $1 million as seed money to get started. And from that very beginning, we partnered with NWTC to provide opportunities for our students. So our students have been on campus since day one of our school, of our school's existence, starting in seventh grade. What you kind of see before you is who we are. It's what's important to us and it's what we've come of it. If you start on the bottom left, you'll see some words, explore, moving up to engage, then moving up to empower. Starting as a first-year student or a seventh or eighth grader, you explore things. They explore four different pathways at NWTC. We're heavily, heavily embedded in their College of Business, Health Science, Trades, and Advanced Manufacturing. So our students are taking specially-designed courses for them in those areas throughout the year. They're not graded on those. They're just there to experience what the opportunities are for them. So it's purely an experience-type thing to get their foot in the door. That second year, we asked them to go a little deeper. That second year, they're, they're providing evidence of what they've learned. So in this year, our students are taking similar courses, but with new content. This is where we hear comments like, "Our eighth and ninth graders are passing college-level proficiency in welding, but they're not old enough to take the class, so just wait." We've moved on to year three now. We're going to expand from our four different colleges into seven different colleges at NWTC to provide more opportunities. Our academy students will get their first opportunity to participate on Friday mornings. And this is truly for students to identify what motivates them, what their passions are, where they see themselves in the future. The first yellow box still left there is work-based learning. That's a program that we piloted last year with the help of NWTC and the Northeast Wisconsin Manufacturing Alliance. We are in manufacturing right now. We are going to be branching out to CNA, the trades, and and the IT world this next school year. Our students attend school part of the day and work part of the day, making a minimum of $15 an hour. They're employees of that company. We have eight manufacturing companies that are heavily involved right now. We're meeting with the trades group to provide them access. Five of our academy students walked out of school this year with $22 an hour jobs from La Force. So they were in full benefit. So that's something we saw as a direct relationship with our partnerships. Our dual credit, the second yellow box is cohort of dual credit, which is something unique that we've been able to work with. This past year, we piloted that and we had 46 opportunities every eight weeks for our students to take a dual-credit class at NWTC, but only with NEW students. So we were able to provide wraparound services with our school and NWTC student services as well to make sure they had a nice transition to that program. This next year, we're going to have 96 opportunities every eight weeks. That means our goal is that a third of our school is going to be taking a college class every eight weeks at our school. We think it's a very ambitious but doable goal. And we've seen that our students are walking out the door with certificates or one course shy of earning an industry credential. Our last goal, and in full admit, we're a little behind due to COVID, is a full immersion. Our final vision is that our students, where they've met their goals for high school graduation, are taking college classes and only working with us what they need. So they might have a very diverse and flexible schedule, moving back and forth throughout the day. And being onsite is going to be really helpful for that. It's going to remove up to three hours a week on a bus. And we're gaining all of that time back in academics. So we're not transporting kids anymore. So we're super excited about that. NWTC this past year, they knew our time, our physical space constraints, and they provided five classrooms to the academy. We went from an enrollment of 100 to 165. We were able to service 224 students. We've had over 100 students on the waitlist every single year for that program. We've been able to eliminate that down to very few to the start of the school year. They've been very gracious again, as we've outgrown our space at Cherry Street, and we're now going to house 13 classrooms and some offices. They're also providing us space in their gym, their cafeteria, and any outdoor recreation space as well, which is something our students have not had access to. So we're really excited as we continue to push this partnership along. One happy but sad thing, NWTC approached us about a grant opportunity this past spring. And it was an innovative workforce development grant, something that wasn't on our radar. And they brought us in as a partner and it was an $8.8 million grant. And our, our pot funds of it would be $6.2 million for the building of a new facility onsite. So they're not only dedicated to this vision, they really are working to make sure that we have a space there for the long term as well. They brought us another grant this spring. We're eagerly waiting for it. It's an upward-bound math and science grant in the neighborhood of about $500,000, which TC will hire two staff members just to work with our kids. So they're building the infrastructure around our program as well. And Dr. Raffin and his leadership team have been outstanding in saying they want our kids to feel like part of the campus, the community events, anything that they're offered, they're making sure our kids have that opportunity. Any questions? I know it was a lot. Love my school.
Brian? You had spoken of that there had been a waitlist and then just a few students remained on that. Are these all Green Bay area students or do we have any students opening and rolling into the program or being referred by other districts?
Oops, sorry. We have never recruited or even advertised our 12th grade program ever. We have a couple of kids that open and roll from outside the district. I would say a majority of the kids that have been on the waitlist are our students from Green Bay Public Schools. We have a waitlist of 40 and growing with our younger grades. I receive a phone call almost every day about someone who's heard about our school, who's interested in coming there, but we're at capacity. We're at full capacity. We are accepting applications and we'll see what that waitlist looks like. And I would say it's probably 50/50 between outside the district and in the district right now for our younger grades.
Brian? You had said, and I may be incorrect on this, it was mainly students that were credit deficient to start with or that they're in risk of graduating. Is that, am I incorrect on that or, and does that still remain so or is this open to any student in the district?
So our school is open and designed for the success of all students. But our 12th grade program really was designed for credit-deficient students. But we've had students who have a lot of credits and have applied because they want to explore some of the other opportunities we provided for them. For our younger students, it's just students who haven't found what works for them yet. So they could be incredibly gifted students. We have kids that are well above college level, math, reading, like that. And we have kids that are struggling to catch up with their peers. So it's kind of all over the place. And again, we've never really recruited outside of that first year. We've let our storytellers tell, tell what's happening. And we just haven't had the space to say, "Come to NEW."
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just want to add to that because we do have new board members since the time this, this program and school actually began. Dr. Langenfeld, back in 2014, asked us to take a look at the students that weren't graduating or were behind by their senior year. And Jason and I did a lot of digging and, under the direction of Claudia Hendrickson, discovered that the majority of students that weren't making it were our kids. They were with us, as Jason had mentioned, almost always through their career. But they were credit deficient and were experiencing transience. So a lot of movements, especially during their high school years, which we know puts students behind. Jason piloted this program with a handful of kids. It was just him. There weren't two teachers initially. It was just Jason. And he worked very, very hard to ensure that those students had an opportunity to graduate. And the target was to increase graduation rates, but not by lowering the bar. And that's exactly the program that Jason created.
If I could add just one more thing too. If we talk about our 12th grade credit-deficient students, they're not skill, skill deficient or knowledge deficient. This past year, all of our seniors, we asked them to take the acupressure, which is the entrance exam for NWTC. We had 161 students willingly to take that. 86% of our students had a score high enough to get into at least one program at NWTC. 76% had a high enough math score to get into NWTC. So again, our students have this knowledge to have these things, but something, life, whatever's gotten in the way, they can do it. We're just providing them another opportunity instead of saying, "Your time is done."
Laura?
So during my time on the board, it has been just an incredible pleasure to watch you grow this. It's just a huge success for our district. And I'm just personally really proud that our district can do this for our students. I know a lot of people had a hand in it, but I know that you're the daily driver on this. At any rate, my question to you right now is, what's your biggest challenge? What do you need? What do you need from us?
Space. That's the honest answer.
Final frontier?
No, I think we've had, we've had a waitlist since we started. I think there are many kids that would like to go to our school and we'd like to tell the story of our school too. But with 120 students locked in from 7 through 12 and then our academy program, there's no room to grow. We feel very supported by the district for the things that they've been able to provide, the staffing, the resources, the expertise. They've been great problem solvers with us in NWTC, but that's just one thing we haven't been able to navigate. And I know COVID got in the way of the first round when we attempted to do this. And you know, I don't know what the final goal is for, for this board, but I'm really, really embedded in NWTC. I think that makes the most sense with this vision with our students. So being onsite is going to cause our kids to have so many opportunities they wouldn't have elsewhere. They're already there. They're already succeeding there. So why wouldn't I go on to college? Our goal in the next two years is 30% of our seniors will enroll at a two-year technical college, at least. We were at 17% the last time we were able to track data. So we're talking about a 13% jump in the next two years. That's our goal that we've identified and put on paper.
Thank you.
Who goes to James?
So as your population changes and diversifies from those that were credit deficient to a more general population, how do you, or do you accommodate students that want to go to your program but also want to do other extracurriculars? Do you have any programs set up or do they go through the college's extracurricular program?
Right now, students participate in sports that would have been, what would have been their comprehensive homeschool. We were the first school that had esports the last two years. Our team did really well this year. So we're excited about that. But as we grow and now we have a gym space to use, so the opportunity to start a club team, which then can lead to something more there, so works. We want those opportunities. Our kids want them. We're just not there yet. But they can go back to their homeschool and get those. Now with our move to the far west side, there could be some more creativity about how and where our kids can participate with that. But there's some flexibility when a student enrolls in a school for the first time, identifying or declaring, "This is my school." They can compete that. So in my mind, a west-side school makes more sense than trying to get a student all the way over to the east side for a practice. Because our calendar, our dates are always backed up. I'm sorry, the times. We don't start school till after, at 8:30, we get done at 3:00. So they're already a little behind their peers as far when they get out. But that's what's best for our kids.
Brian? With this project going on and NWTC where the expansion's going, and if you don't know, feel free to say that, what, what would be the cap number that you would be able to see with the improved physical space from NWTC here? Am I misinterpreting this? As far as, that'll allow program expansion, correct?
If we had gotten a grant, we would be expanding space for next year. Right now, we're going to grow into the space they're providing. I think long-term, I don't really envision a school of more than 450 students for what we're doing or try to provide. I think beyond that, you're too big and you're not giving them the personal attention that they really do need. Because they do need a lot sometimes.
Other questions? So I have, I have a couple. So when you're talking about, what's your total enrollment going into the fall?
285 to 295.
And what is the, is there a, is there a cap in the charter or no?
Originally in our charter, we had 50 students in each grade and 100 students in the academy. But just by space alone, we've reduced those numbers to what they are now. So this past school year, we accepted applications for all grades, but only enrolled students in seventh, eighth, and ninth. So this next year, we anticipate a large graduating class, which will open up more spots, but 120 has been that cap. 80 was our cap the first two years, and when the academy moved, we were able to increase that by 40 because that's the capacity at Cherry Street.
As from, from, from my perspective, I think, you know, when you're planning, it's important to have a, you know, negotiate the, with the board, the various caps. But I think if, I would hope that we would be back at the board table if we reached a point where there was room to go further and only, only a cap number that was discussed some years ago was standing in the way. I'd like to, you know, when that time comes, hopefully we would be, hopefully we would be asked and we'd be able to come back to the table to, to amend that. But I, so I just wanted to clarify that there isn't an arbitrary number sitting in the way, but rather you're right around the, pretty much at the size you want to be right now with the space that's available?
We have as many students as the space will accommodate. We have two teachers that are going to be piloting a co-shared classroom in our younger grades. We've never done that, but they got the biggest, prettiest room. So that was the compromise.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
And that will conclude the education work session.
Okay, up next is operations. We're going to talk about our, our district's energy resolution. And our guests, Casey Hicks, Guillermo Gomez, and Mr. Ned Dorf. And this will be facilitated by Don Smith. Welcome. Yes?
The resolution is in the board docs.
Yes, the res, he's, he had a, has a, a slide deck. Yeah, and I think it got to Lindsay. I'm sorry, Kinsey. No, it wasn't.
I think maybe while that's just being loaded up, we could introduce ourselves because I know since the last time we spoke, there are some new faces on the board and we're not all familiar to you. So I'll just start off by saying I'm Casey Hicks. I'm organizing director with Wisconsin Conservation Voters and my pronouns are E-H-M-H-S.
Little face.
I keep hitting the wrong button. Thank you. Ned Dorf, IT at Aldo, first and second grade.
I'm Guillermo Gomez. I'm the northeast organizer with Wisconsin Conservation Voters. I'm based out of Green Bay and I work in the whole northeast region.
And I think before we dive too deep into the weeds, I also know that our organization is not totally well-known to everyone on the board as well. So just a little bit of background about Wisconsin Conservation Voters. We're a grassroots advocacy organization. We have about 70,000 members across the states, offices in Milwaukee, Madison, Eau Claire, and here in Green Bay where we've been organizing, working here for the last 15 years or so. I myself have lived here for 10 years and actually worked with the school district previous to Wisconsin Conservation Voters with a different organization. But anyway, I'm going off on a tangent. We've been really active in this community for the last few years when it comes to clean energy and working with municipalities and local governments and different institutions and passing policy that sets up goals for them to reach 100% clean energy, reduce their carbon footprints, and ultimately make a more healthy, clean environment for the folks that live here. So just to name a few other places that we've worked with has been the city of Green Bay. And Ned is vice chair of the City Sustainability Commission as well. So if you've got some questions for the city, he might be good to ask that. But otherwise, we've worked with the city of DePere in Brown County, yourselves, and UW-Green Bay. And I could just keep going on and on with some institutions that we've worked with. But the other thing I do want to say quickly before we get too far into the presentation is we passed this with all of you back in 2020. We started working with you on this as far back as 2019. And shortly after, or actually right as this was passed, is when the COVID-19 pandemic began. And we just want to recognize, first of all, that the last two years have been an immense challenge for folks in education, for students, and for families. And that we know that there's been a lot of things pulling your attention away from this resolution. So really, the reason why we wanted to come before you today was to remind you of the work that we've done previously together and just offer to continue working together into the future on, on the goals that you set out, that we set out together through this resolution. So with that being said, I think we can go into the time machine here. And I'm going to turn it over to Ned. He's going to talk a little bit about what the school district has done in the past.
Thank you, Casey. So just looking back over the last decade or so, we've, we've done a lot as a district regarding energy efficiency. Back in 2010, we had a big referendum that some of you probably remember where we were able to secure funds for a lot of HVAC upgrades, new windows on schools and things of that nature. And that's really made a good, good progress in our energy use in the district over the last decade or so. We've also, over the last few decades, partnered with Wisconsin Public Service back when they put solar panels on, on the high schools. And, and also partnered with us to do the solar education for teachers. So Scott Litticoe, who some of you probably know, taught that curriculum out at TC for, for a lot of teachers from around the state to come in and Taught that curriculum out at TC for for a lot of teachers from around the state to come in and learn how to incorporate. Clean energy as part of the curriculum. We we also make use, a lot of the teachers in the district make use of the resources that come from UW Stevens Point. There are some good energy pieces of curriculum that come out of there. As a district, we we have several teams that participate in the Solar Olympics, which is held in at UW GB every year. And and so there's there's definitely a culture in our school district of being environmentally aware. Of wanting to become more efficient with our energy. And and, you know, use those energy dollars elsewhere once we've we've saved those costs. So kind of getting to the why, you know, why are we getting together again to talk about this? The the last four years, the district has really started to move. Toward the idea that we could produce our own clean energy, at least to some degree. Back in twenty eighteen, in the spring, I personally started meeting with Kim Shanock, who was our district grant writer at the time. And we were looking at at some money from the Public Service Corporation or Commission. They were starting to release funds for municipalities and local governments to become more energy efficient. And to put renewable energy on site. We applied, we had a big application. We were not successful. The county was successful, however. So that's where they got their panels for their STEM building. At UW GB. That was a partnership, I think, that they worked with. And so that was twenty eighteen. We I started meeting with with Kim and then later with other district administrators. And and then in the fall of that year, the report came out from the I I P C about. The international, sorry, Panel on Climate, IPCC Panel on Climate Change. Where we really were alerted to the fact that we needed to take some serious action by twenty thirty. To address some of the major pollution issues. So that being said, in twenty nineteen. Laura and Brenda Warren especially began meeting with Seth from Conservation Voters, myself, Casey. Really to to look at how could the district address the climate crisis? And we thought about ideas for what we could do in the short term, thought about ideas for the long term. And and started to think about what would be some funding opportunities for that. And then in twenty twenty, after several months of meeting. We brought forward the proposal to to the Green Bay School Board in in March of twenty twenty. For the for the Clean Energy Plan. And it was agreed to unanimously, which was wonderful. But we've we've got, you know, I think people here who have a great desire to be part of the solution. From the top down. I mean, kids that are engaged in this, we've got staff that are engaged in this. And certainly, in my conversations with district leadership over the last four years. It's certainly something that people are aware of here at V O B and certainly the board. So I'm I'm feeling really hopeful that we can start moving things again in the right direction.
Thanks, Ned. Can we move to the next slide, please? Awesome. Thank you. So yeah, I'm just going to pick up where Ned left off. As far as the timeline goes, when we pass this resolution, there's one more thing I just want to add to as far as the why. And particularly why it's important for the school district to take the commitment that you all made seriously and really work towards it. It's because in order to solve a problem as large as climate change is all encompassing as it is. We really need everyone on board, not just from like the individual level, but institutions, local governments, businesses. This is a problem that requires all hands on deck. So that being said, school districts often have very large carbon footprints. They're big energy users. For for you all specifically, if you have forty buildings, twenty-one thousand students or so. Buses, you've got to worry about sporting events after school, after school activities, and you're not just running through the school year. So that's a lot of energy that you're using. You're a large customer of the utility and you're a leader in the community. So all of those things put together, people look to you as as a district to be leaders, especially on this subject. I know students definitely do. Speaking as a an adjacent young person, I guess. But so really, we were extremely excited to have past members of the board reach out to us. And be able to work closely with Dr. Langenfeld, Mike Stangle, who I understand is retiring pretty soon here. And really put this vision together in this resolution. And the really exciting thing was you were all were really on top of it back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Because when we originally started talking about this resolution with everyone, there was only one other school district that had passed this type of policy. And that was Madison. And I think most people expect Madison to do those types of things. But then Eau Claire very shortly beat us to passing our own resolution. I remember there being some consternation about that because we wanted to beat them. But still, being the third school district in the state to make this type of commitment, one hundred percent clean energy by the year twenty fifty. Is a big accomplishment in its own. But I think the thing for you all to really hang your hats on. Is the policy that we created together and that you passed is easily the most forward thinking one in the entire state, the most actionable one. And there are a few reasons why. And if we can move on to the next slide, I'll share why exactly. So number one, being the the goal that you actually set out for yourselves is a good, ambitious, realistic goal. That's in line with what utilities are trying to accomplish themselves, the federal and state government is trying to accomplish itself. So you all were actually ahead of that. A lot of those commitments from utilities, the federal and state governments have actually come after this. Commitment that you passed. But really, it's a good goal to have. It's one that is ambitious, but is still realistic and something that can be reached. We'll talk about a little bit in the next slide exactly how you can reach that, specifically that fifty percent mark by twenty thirty-five. Typically, when you think about these commitments, it's five, ten years out in those types of increments. The other really exciting thing, a great opportunity before the board right now is updating the facilities plan. The resolution not only laid out a goal, but specifically mentioned updating the facilities plan to include these goals, these steps and ways to implement them. As well as the wellness policy, which is something that I thought was particularly exciting because no other school district had mentioned anything about student health in their resolution. So the fact that you all had put that and had that intention, I think, really spoke volumes about your values. Beyond that, the other thing that is really exciting, really set you all apart, was establishing this Fund Forty-Six Capital Improvement Fund. So takes five years. This is a this is a if you're not already aware. And I'm sure someone who's a member of the cabinet could probably explain it better than I could. But basically, you had this capital improvement fund that you can use specifically for these clean energy projects that will capitalize after five years. So that was started two years ago, got three more years left. It's growing, it's being added to. And the state does contribute a portion of money for every dollar that the school district puts in. So you'll hopefully have a pretty good chunk of money at the end of that five years to start putting towards projects. And one of the other things that this resolution laid out was a solar pilot project at one of the schools. Which I think, if I'm remembering correctly, was Lombardi, right? Okay, so very exciting there. And then the very last piece of this, which is. Very important to to mention is assembling a volunteer work group and just designating some staff time to this. The reason why it's important to have some type of volunteer work group is because you need that institutional knowledge. And you need some kind of apparatus within the school district that's going to be doing the actual work, right? Seeking out grants, working with consultants, working with firms, contractors for actually building out a clean energy plan. Or looking at certain schools for certain projects. And just generally driving the work over the years. So all of these things are incredibly important. If we can move on to the next slide, too. I'll just point out some of these next steps and opportunities that we want to just make sure you're all aware of. Because you're set up very well right now to start doing. Really taking some action on on this policy that you set up two years ago. So number one, actually, or sorry, Ned almost called you Seth. Do you want to talk a little bit about the referendum and some of the?
Yeah, sure. I will address that first item. Back in twenty nineteen, when when Laura and Brenda and I started meeting with with Seth. We talked about what could we potentially do at some point when we have a lot of money, right? So for a referendum. What could we do systematically across the district to address the climate crisis? And and so after working through a project at at the school site where I work, Aldo Leopold. I think I've I've learned some things that might be helpful. As to how on a larger scale, we could address some of our needs. And and one of the things we would need to do at some point, hopefully soon, would be to complete structural analyses. On our buildings to see if they are strong enough structurally to support solar. That that's one thing that absolutely would need to happen. Another thing that would need to happen is we would have to have a plan. And this is, you know, from working with Mike Stangle is we have to have a plan to to re-roof. We've got some some roofs on our buildings that are very, very, very out of date. And and those membranes, you know, they get leaky. They need to be replaced. So, you know, doing a structural analysis, having a plan for re-roofing. But also, you know, doing those studies isn't free. That that takes a lot of money to do those. So it's kind of phase one. Phase two, I think. Yes, I'm sorry.
Quick question about roofs. Are roofs generally always the best location for solar panels?
So the the first project that we're doing at Aldo is actually going to be on the south wall. Kind of creating a solar awning. So no, not always. You'll you need an analysis done wherever you put it on. But certainly, we we worked with Bay Link at West High School to create some of the structural supports, which is pretty cool. And, you know, there are there are a lot of possibilities. There's even ground mounting, which tends to be more expensive. But possibly sometimes the only way to go. So what I would, as we look forward to the upcoming referendum, which I know is in the very near horizon. Really, really beseech the board to consider putting in money for. The the studies that need to happen on our buildings to see where we could actually build solar capacity. Phase two would actually be the construction, right? So when when Kim Shanock and I worked on that grant in twenty eighteen, it was to do those studies because that really needs to happen. And like I said, we were unsuccessful on that one, but it does need to happen first. And if we really want to get to fifty percent clean energy by twenty thirty-five. We need to start moving. That's all.
Okay. Um, so yeah, just picking up where Ned had left off. Right now, I know you all are working on updating the facilities plan and working with a firm. So I think it's just a matter of working with that firm, letting them know about the goals that you've set for yourself and your values and where you want to be. Ten years from now and just making sure that that's embedded within that facilities plan. And in fact, going just down to the very last bullet point might be a really great project, first project for any volunteer work group that you're going to be assembling to really work on. As well, you know, updating the wellness policy as well. I'm not a health professional by any means, but I'm just pointing out the fact that there's a great opportunity to do that at the same time, too. The Fund Forty-Six is ongoing, so you're already contributing to it and you will be contributing to it. And I know that there's already been talks a little bit about, you know, doing this work, this pilot project work at Lombardi Middle School potentially. Maybe, you know, there's probably even an opportunity before you two with this current referendum to get the ball rolling on that as well. Along with all those other base building items that you could take advantage of as well, like the structural analysis that Ned had mentioned. And everything else. But then, yeah, the very last thing, setting up that volunteer work group is going to be one of the most important things that you can do in the immediate term. Pulling together students, pulling together technical experts from the community, a faculty member. Other people who understand policy and understand the science or technical aspects of this all can really contribute to making a really strong group. And there are tons of great examples just here in our local community that you can point to. DePere has a sustainability commission, the Brown County, our Brown County Board has an energy subcommittee. The city has its own sustainability commission, all of which I know are very eager to partner across municipalities to share names of folks that they know. And that's something that we're also very ready to do. As I mentioned, we have about seventy thousand members across the state. But here in Brown County, we have twenty-five hundred or so members. So we have good connections and networks, people that we can point you to who understand a lot of the inner workings of how to actually accomplish these things. I think we could move on to the next slide here and I'm going to send it over to Guillermo. Because there's a lot of exciting stuff happening across the state that I think you could take inspiration from.
Awesome. Thank you, Casey. Well, this is my favorite part and not only because I'm able to talk. But because there's honestly a lot of really cool things happening across the state. So obviously, as Casey had mentioned, Madison Metropolitan School District in twenty nineteen, goals were placed to meet fifty percent of all M M S. M M S D operations, energy needs with renewable energy. By twenty thirty, they set a goal for seventy percent, seventy-five percent by twenty thirty-five and a hundred percent by twenty forty. The Middleton Cross Plains Area School District also passed a similar resolution in twenty twenty-one. That would establish goals to meet a hundred percent of all district operations with renewable energy by twenty thirty-five. But I think the most interesting and greatest part of this to me is this was all student led. This one in Middleton Cross Plains was led by a student named Daphne, actually, and she was a part of Middleton's green team. And she was also the president of this wonderful committee across the Dane County area that works with youth. From all schools in the area to establish organizations on campuses. Establish goals for individual schools, try and create new programs, collaborate. It's the Dane County Youth Environmental Committee. And yeah, they basically had up this clean energy resolution, which was honestly just really amazing. And for some of the cooler stuff, too, Sun Prairie School District, they've been implementing geothermal systems in new schools. They've also been tracking energy usage and cost savings from switching to energy efficient lighting. And all of that information is available to the public. And that just shows the impact, the usage, the change that's happened over the years, how much they've saved. And just how impactful it's been for the district. And for some of the really, really cool stuff, and for some of the leaders that have been here for forever, over a decade. The Fort Atkinson School District. So since two thousand and seven, the district has saved over a million dollars from switching to clean energy. And from implementing energy saving methods within their schools. And that includes geothermal implementation, which four out of their six schools use. Solar panels that heat pools in middle and high schools, which is really amazing. Wind turbines that supply energy for high schools, which amounts to, I think, about six percent for the high schools of all their energy usages. They've also done things like removing plastic utensils. And in twenty eighteen, they conducted a facilities assessment that helped them make recommendations for energy reductions. So they were able to make some really good energy reductions just by conducting a facilities assessment to help with their clean energy usage. And obviously, from all of these examples, there's a lot more individual schools and students. Organizations at schools that are working towards a cleaner future for Wisconsin students. And, yeah, you know, the four examples I have up here today are school districts. But, you know, talking to other leaders in the south central part of the state, the northeast part of the state over in like Eau Claire. There's so many individual schools that are taking their own action. So many students that are leading charges for organizations, for schools to create their own clean energy resolutions, get solar installed at schools. Then that's completely outside of the district, and I think it's just really amazing seeing all this stuff that's happening. And especially with all these examples and the fact that we have committed to clean energy. I'm just like really excited for the future of Green Bay. And, you know, hopefully we can be that kind of community northeastern leader and, you know, help with these examples up here and do these really cool things in schools that. That'll hopefully take charge and, you know, help with, with students across the state, across the area.
I was gonna say, we have time, yeah, we're ready for questions now if you have them.
Brian?
Thank you for your presentation. With our previous presenter and the focus on the trades, are you familiar with any school districts that have specifically partnered with electrical installers? I know that we have some very well-known solar energy groups in locally here that are fantastic at solar installation that. As a district, we've, we've worked well with local groups as far as providing trading for different trades and skills on there. Do you know of any other districts that have worked with electrical workers and other of the trades to kind of help co-facilitate the programming and the installation and the monitoring and, you know, really turn it into a learning opportunity for the students?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question first, and then Ned or Guillermo, if you have follow-up. I'll just speak to my alma mater, I grew up in Random Lake, in Random Lake School District. Cause he's done some pretty cool stuff for the last few years. When I was a student there, they created, or they built a wind turbine, you know, didn't power, at that time, it was, I think, 2009, and it was the very first clean energy project that they had ever done, so. It doesn't provide a whole lot of energy, but they definitely use that as a, as a learning opportunity, both in terms of like their technical education, but then also. Even biology classes, we pretty often reference that, look like, look at energy usage and everything. So that very first step that my old school district took. Has really grown into something pretty cool, they recently partnered with We Energies. To install solar panels on their entire rooftop at their building. Granted, it's a much smaller school district, they only have one building. But nonetheless, like as far as curriculum goes and baking it into education. They basically have a partnership set up with We Energies where their students, their tech ed students are able to work with some of the technicians maintaining. Maintaining the solar panels, or at least just going up and seeing how they work, monitoring the data that's coming out of them. So they were able to actually kind of negotiate that in the contract that they set up. And just by the way, they technically don't own the solar panels, they're owned by Wisconsin Public Service, or sorry, We Energies. Basically the same organization. But, so there was no upfront cost to that, by the way.
And have you noticed other schools, have they been leasing, have they been given, I know there's two programs or models as far as K-12 and government buildings of. Either leasing the equipment and getting preferred rates and on that, or owning them, has there been? Do you know what the, what the approach is in Wisconsin, what other groups have done with it?
I think it really does come down individually to what you as a district would want, and there's a lot of different things I think you could consider. I think number one being costed is more cost-effective to, you know, go with a third-party. Solar and set up like that, that contract, in this case, it would be like Wisconsin Public Service. Because there isn't any maintenance cost, there's no upfront cost. They basically take care of everything. The only downside to that is then you are not necessarily getting the energy directly from that, it is going back into the grid and then you're basically buying it back. Other places like. I'll just use Dane County as an example, been able to set up a partnership with Madison Gas and Electric. So that even though they don't technically own the installation, the energy's going back into the grid, they're buying it back at a reduced rate. But I, I think, yeah, the, you know, the benefits to owning them. You know, it would be the fact that you see more direct cost savings, you're actually having that energy that you're producing on your own. Also, I think there's something to be said in terms of resiliency, because one of the other factors. In this commitment is not only where are you producing your energy, but also how are you adapting to climate change? Because inevitably, we are going to feel the effects of climate change much, much more as, as time goes on and. Particularly here in Green Bay, that's going to mean more things like flooding, more extreme weather events, hotter days. So you do have like, I think, a little bit more control in going the route of owning things and building that into resiliency and how your buildings would operate. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Ned, since you actually have done a lot more direct work than I have.
I will say about partnerships that. We've been fortunate to work with Eland Electric, and they've been giving us a lot of free labor and expertise, and it was actually their recommendation to us that we work with BayLink. To save some money on the project. For, for our, our high school students to fabricate the brackets, so. I do think we have some good local folks that. We can count on as resources.
You mentioned geothermal and having some. There's some school districts that we can look at that are, are using it. What kind of, and I think it's important to, when we talk about the energy efficiency to. You know, talk not just about what people might think is just a feel-good resolution for. That finishes 18 years from now, but also what is that? What is that doing, you know, what is that doing for us right now in addition to environmental benefits? So, could you just share a little bit about what kind of payback time there tends to be on, on geothermal?
So I'll be honest, as far as payback time specifically on geothermal, I don't have a good answer for you, but it's something we could look into and come back to the board with.
I don't have a direct answer, but I do know that, that our previous superintendent works very hard to get geothermal in his previous school district, so he'd probably be able to share some of those numbers with us. From Iowa City.
One more thing I'll add to, we can connect you with Jenny Brinker from NWTC. Because they have, they built geothermal in one of their new buildings, and so they might have that direct data and like cost analysis to share. Especially since it's region-specific, that might be really helpful.
I think, I think it's fairly, you know, I think it's fairly short, and there might be an opportunity. If we can confirm that that payback time on it is, is fairly short, especially given. You know, given world circumstances that are not going to be, you know, not just supply, but on top of supply issues. Just a world environment that's not going to lead to gas and oil getting cheaper any, anytime soon.
Can I, sorry, can I add real quickly, too? When I, I had also mentioned Sun Prairie, and then adding geothermal into all their new schools that, that have been being built. And they do, like I said, they do track their energy usage online. I don't have the specific numbers, but I believe there is a breakdown. So if you do, just look it up on their website, you should be able to see a breakdown of how much that's saved, so.
Okay, so I had to spin up because I'm one of the newborners that wasn't here previously, so excuse some of the naive questions. So what I see is a resolution that was passed, and I know that COVID happened right after the resolution, so I feel like we're at ground zero, right? So I don't know where we are as far as the pilot program and what percentage of our goal in 2035 as we met, I'm assuming zero to single digits. But I don't see a plan, I see goals, and then we had a facility plan that we needed to adjust, a wellness plan, but then there's a committee. So I guess I'm looking for an understanding of to whom will it fall? The very large project of putting some concrete details around how much it'll cost the district to move from zero to 50%. In the 15 years or so, that 13 years that we have to do so. And what's the selection of projects, because it feels like you're missed kind of for this falls referendum, because we're really in. To project selection that have those details associated with them so we can present to public. And we're really close to initial reports from the tenure of facility plan. So if we're going to inform that consultant with what the needs are and what they have to plan for. Where and how do we get from where we are to being able to inform that process in six months?
I think first of all. Setting up the, the, the group, whatever we want to call it, the working group. We had a green team at one point, we could call it that again. To, to get some, some of those answers more specifically, right? So, but we do know that if we ever plan to put any solar on school buildings or anything of that nature. We really need to do structural studies, so certainly that would need to happen regardless.
Completely agree with you there, but so it really is the intention for this assemblage of different subject matter experts. That is not yet defined to take on this task and go from concepts to concrete plan. In Q3 and Q4 of this year.
Yeah, so, speaking specifically on the facilities plan and. The solar array, the project list that we're presenting to the board tonight, that we're proposing. The referendum language covers, includes a solar array to power both Lombardi and King. So that, that is work that actually came out of this resolution. We, we have some quotes, we have established the Fund 46 as well. As, as he mentioned, we're about three years from being able to draw on that. But we believe we can get. We can get the solar array project done as part of this referendum. Now, we have also shared this resolution with the ATSNR, who is doing the long-term facilities master plan, so they are aware of the goals of, of the district. And they should be taking that into account. Now that being said, they are not experts on clean energy by any means, right? So it is likely that we'll have to do specific. Solar array roof surveys and, and things like that, but they will be taking our desire for carbon neutrality by 2050 into account. When they're developing the facilities master plan, we've already been in conversations with them about that.
Okay, I appreciate that, so right now, from an operations perspective, you have it just as part of your operations plan, there's not. A, a project plan that is this initiative phased out, projects and all the. I don't know how you would measure 50%, whether it's on the expense side, which fluctuates, or if we're going to kind of instrument our, our energy consumption so that we can. Can monitor that, all that kind of put in the plan for the district so that we can. Understand our pathway.
Yeah, I'd say that's accurate, that such a plan that you just described does not exist, it's part of our overall operational plan, but we don't have like. A task force or anything like that.
Thank you. One of the things that's been mentioned is obviously reducing the energy consumption and, and solar panels is obviously a big project that works with it. Are you familiar with any districts or public utilities that have worked with increasing like access to electric vehicle charging stations and things like that? I know I passed on an article, I think to. No, not to anyone on the board, but a school district in upstate New York is using charging stations as an ability to recruit staff members for it as, as an incentive with it, but that would also. Count towards our bigger picture of reducing our carbon imprint, you know, and renewable energy. Are you familiar with any districts that have partnered with any groups or any government agencies that have partnered with groups to increase the amount of charging stations available to the public? Or to staff or to both? In the state.
Wisconsin specifically, I'm not aware of any off the top of my head unless you came across any Guillermo or Ned. There is, um, I mean, there's several districts, I mean, that does exist, definitely. There's one district I can point to in California, Southern California, that. Actually like installed ground solar arrays over their parking lot, and then pretty much every one of those or every other one. Is set up with a vehicle charging station. I mean, there's lots of fun, like innovative, cool, interesting things that you can dive into and learn more about. And one thing that I thought was really cool. And again, in California, they're really ahead on a lot of this, so you'll often see examples come from, come from them, but they actually. There's one district that replaced their fleet of buses with electric buses. And those want, those buses can actually be used as backup generators in an event that they would lose power and they're cut off from the grid. Which is also really cool and fits in, not only is it cool, but it also fits into the actual. Adaptation, resiliency piece of, of a resolution or a policy commitment when it comes to climate change, too. One thing to. Dr. Lyerly, the other thing I'll mention. Oh, for some reason I thought you were, okay, my bad, well, either way. So we, one other thing to just kind of add to what we were just talking about before with this volunteer work group. One of the first things that you would want to do with them or that they would probably be tasked with doing is doing an energy assessment. And maybe Ned wants to speak to this a little bit more, but the city worked with NWTC students to actually do that energy assessment. So it wasn't money that they had to pay for that, basically it was part of the classes for those NWTC students. And I could easily see the partnership that you all have set up with NWTC that that could just be like folded in with high school students as well to just. Look at the district's energy usage, because once you know how much energy you're using, you know how much then you need to reduce and then replace. First and foremost, the cleanest form of energy is energy that you don't use. So that's going to be one of the first steps, is just figuring out how much you use, reducing it, becoming efficient, and then looking towards some of those really fun projects. But do you want to add to that, Ned?
I will say that I've approached Jenny at NWTC and she's, she's been willing to take this on with her students, so hopefully that's still the case. And, and I think, you know. We can, we can look to their expertise in that area, it's possible that if we don't have money for, for engineering, there may be, who knows, we could explore a partnership with, with engineering students. But, but I think TC, you know, is, is a fantastic resource that we could continue to work with.
I have a couple of specific questions and then just an overall observation. Can a building that's already in existence be retrofitted for geothermal?
My understanding, it's, it's difficult to do that for an existing building, but it can be done. It's easier to do with a new build, though.
Okay. Second question is. Once we set up this green team, for lack of a better word, but, but it's, I'd like it. My understanding is that'll make us more attractive to potential grants or potential grants, once there's some kind of structure. You know, in a, in a, I don't know about a plan necessarily, but if we want to attract grant money. That we need to show that we're serious about this and. And, um, so, um, so I, I guess I just answered my own question, but, um, like a, as soon as we can do that, I think the sooner the better. And then overall, I, one of the best things about all of this is how exciting I think it could be to have all of this linked to our students, as much student involvement embedded in curriculum, whatever it takes to, to get buy-in from our students at every level. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm kind of excited about that prospect. So I know it won't be easy. I know that there's, we need a plan. I mean, I, I get that, like how much energy do we use and what does it mean to cut it by half? Like that's a, that is a sensible thought. I mean, that's, that's a question that we all should know. Um, but, uh, we're, we're, I feel like, you know, despite not having a plan, I feel like we have momentum. And, and, um, so the, the next step I think should be to, to form this group. Um, and the board should have that discussion and, um, you know, Vicki, I'm sure has ideas and her team as well, how we do that. And the sooner the better. So, um, those are just my thoughts.
So the plan that they're doing now, the facilities, they're going, the facilities plan, they're going to school to school and they're looking at all our needs. In that, Josh, are they able to, you know, give us that information we need about how stable our buildings are that they can support that? Or is that totally something that wouldn't be taken care of by them?
Yeah. I mean, they'll be evaluating, I mean, specifically the structural soundness of, of the roofs and things like that, but they won't be doing any kind of solar surveying. They'd be probably far more focused on energy efficiency, um, as opposed to renewable energy. So yeah, if we were to want to undertake some of these projects, we would have to allocate additional funds for the surveying, certainly. And we already did a survey for the Lombardi King, King thing. Yeah. Yep. That's, that's on there. That's kind of a done deal, but.
Looking at the amount of energy that we aim to reduce from when we started doing this to, you know, our end goal. One thing that's important to remember is obviously we've been speaking of the renewable energy part of it. As a person that just got solar panels on his house about three years ago, the other key component, it's not as fun and glamorous as, you know, people never stop by my house and ask me, what's your insulation like in your house? Because they see the solar panels on it, but the insulation, which the district has been doing for at least 10 years of looking at that structure part of it and the insulation and the energy efficiency also is obviously reducing our energy consumption, which I think we should say credit for and look at it as part of our starting numbers. Because the, the amount of insulation and energy efficiency and the, the resources that the district has spent in the last 10 years, if not, if not longer, definitely we should get credit towards that for reducing our energy input and, or consumption and, and other plans on there. So looking at it in those two or threefold prong approaches is important, but also even looking at our flood control approaches that we're looking at with East High School and, and the other areas that we're addressing with, I think, I think we're doing a good job and need to continue on that. And obviously recognize as a board that the district has made some significant improvements throughout and we continue to. So solar panels are fun, but insulation is effective. So.
It all counts, you know? So I think this facilities master plan is going to be a, a game changer. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna tell us what we have and, um, give us a better idea of what we need to do. So.
Okay. Any other questions for our guests? Thank you. As a new board member who was not here in 2020, when this was passed, this has been really helpful, I think. Yeah, we all appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you. Well, we, we also have a slide with contact information at the end. So for any of you, feel free to just look back at that and contact us. So thanks.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Kinsey, can you get us that slide deck?
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. I just want to, one piece that wasn't really talked about was that wellness policy. I think it is something that that group could look at. Um, and just to kind of illuminate why I think that's probably important. I teach summer school at Howe and, um, for our, in my class called exploring Green Bay. So the whole goal is to get outside, uh, go around town, visit different places on the city bus. First two days of summer school this year, the heat index and air quality were so bad, I wasn't allowed to take the kids outside. So I think that feels kind of like a preview of things to come if we don't continue to act.
That's, thank you, Ned, for sa, uh, for sharing that.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next up on the agenda is going to be the referendum update. Is that Josh?
Good afternoon, evening. The board should have, um, a document posted to board docs called referendum proposed project list. This is, um, this kind of breaks down some of the projects that, uh, that comprise the, the big buckets that we've been talking about here. Now, the reason we're bringing this to you today in this work session is that at your next regular board meeting at the end of July, we will be, um, recommending two, two motions and one is to go to referendum. And then the other one is specific language that the district administration is working with Quarles and Brady on, um, for the ballot. And that ballot, that ballot question language needs to cover the projects that we're intending on doing. So this is kind of the, the last pass, taking a look at the, the project so we can make sure we're in the right direction and, and not, um, missing anything with respect to the ballot questions. This is laid out a little bit differently, um, than it has been in the past. The delayed facility projects, energy efficiency, um, and safety section is, is very similar. I do want to call up, you know, given our, the conversation we just had, that's where that solar array is in there for Lombardi and King. Another, we were just talking on the side here. Um, another area in which the district has done a really good job is with window replacements. LED lights are, are going in kind of anywhere. We really took advantage of, um, not having students in our building during COVID to replace a lot of our lights with LED lights. So those are, those are ways that, um, we are also conserving energy. Those projects are also, um, in that 43.4 million. Once you get down to the secondary school upgrades, there's a, a, a much more, um, detailed look at the projects broken down by each of the buildings. So I think in the past, you've probably just seen athletic and performance spaces or, or something like that. Here it's, it's really laid out. This is what comprises that $48 million in secondary school upgrades. And then, and that's a pretty long list. And then there's a description of the playground improvements at the bottom. In addition to bringing this to you tonight, we'll also be meeting with the city of Green Bay, prior to your next board meeting to make sure there are no concerns on that end, because we are dealing with, um, an unusual circumstance with the West Stadium that we've talked about at length, along with, um, two playgrounds, dance and solibus, that it currently exists on city parks. So that's my spiel. Is there any, any feedback?
Regarding several of these areas that look like they would be open to community use. I'm looking at Edison Track in particular, since there's not a fence around Edison. So the community obviously would be able to use the, the track there. And then, um, with West High School, the discussion with the city on that. But auditoriums are available for rental through the city. So if there was a, I'm sorry, through the, through the school district. So if there was a group that wanted to hold an event there, there's opportunities there that it continues to contribute back to the community. Am I correct?
Yes, I, I think that's true for just about all of these, uh, secondary school upgrades. So your, your correct auditoriums are, um, available for rental. The cost for rental, the board just approved, I think, a month and a half ago or something like that. It's just to break even, you know, to keep them clean and, and safe for us. Along with our outdoor facilities are also available for rent. Those, those rates are available on the website for anyone in the community that wants to check those out. Great point about Edison. I think that's an awesome opportunity for that community around Edison, especially because there are, um, not a lot of sidewalks over there. So it, it could be a, a great place for the community to, to go and use for free.
Anyone else? Okay. This will be moved to our regular board meeting the end of the month. Thank you, Josh. Sorry, I'm, there we go. And then, um, our last item under operations is going to be the COVID protocols. Vicki, is that you? Thank you.
Thanks. And I'd like to ask Pam and Melissa to join. Uh, I want to start just by reading a statement off of the CDC website. As the public health response to the COVID-19 pandemic continues to evolve, considerable progress has been made. We now have more tools than ever to prevent COVID from placing strain on communities and healthcare systems. With current high levels of vaccination and high levels of population immunity from both vaccination and previous infections, the risk of medically significant disease, hospitalization and death from COVID is greatly reduced for most people. We are here tonight because there are two motions, uh, that still need, they're, they're on the table yet, uh, still in effect, basically. We are no longer in the pandemic phase of this disease, thankfully. And as the CDC statement, uh, reminds us, everyone now is eligible for the vaccine. So we're in a different place. Uh, but we do still have those two motions. Tonight we're joined by, this is your first time, I think, meeting Pam Wise. She is our new department chair for the nurses. Uh, Christian Johnson, as you know, is retired. And we're also joined by Melissa Thiel-Coller, our legal counsel. I'm going to start off by asking Pam to introduce herself. Please, uh, share with the board your background and then you have some basic information to share.
Thank you for welcoming me here. Um, so I'm Pam Wise. Um, I have been, uh, with the district as a nurse since October of 2020, 2020. Um, prior to that, I was with Brown County Public Health. Um, I started working for Brown County Public Health just as the pandemic hit. Um, so that was very exciting. Um, but the opportunity I was provided with Brown County Public Health is I became the manager for their COVID response team and was able to partner even with the CDC CERT team, which is the Community Emergency Response Team, um, when they were here to support, uh, Brown County Public Health. So that was a wonderful opportunity. Um, and then from there transitioned into the district still under, um, the pandemic. So, um, I did have opportunity, I wanted to share a little bit of data with you, uh, this evening. Prior to discussion, I went on the, the DHS website, uh, this morning. So the Department of Human Services, uh, just looking up some of the, um, information reflective to our county at this time. Um, so this morning DHS was reporting for Brown County data as of July 7th. So it hasn't been updated through the weekend yet. Um, we have 39 cases in the county, 28 of which are confirmed. We have a seven day average of 65 cases within the county. And at this time, we are to, are at a low level of transmission for the county. Thank you.
Got it. Thanks Pam. Uh, so the, the two motions, uh, the first one is about quarantine and isolation protocols. And the second face covering motion, um, at this time, we would turn it over to the board for discussion and hopefully we're able to respond to any questions you might have. Uh, I'm sorry. And on the second page, sorry, on the memo, uh, we do have recommended motions for you to consider as well. Thank you.
Andrew?
I think that, you know, given the, what we're actually doing and that we're not really meaning to quarantine and monitor, have the district monitor quarantine and isolations. I think it's, I think that certainly is something that we could, um, we could pass. I, I don't see any, I don't see any benefit in dropping the rule that if we hit, um, 400 per, uh, 400, uh, per 100,000 for seven days, which would be double where we're at now, um, all it does is trigger a meeting. It doesn't trigger automatic masks. Um, I guess I don't see why we, why we wouldn't keep that. I think it would be prudent if, if, uh, COVID were to, it would be a full doubling of where we are now. I, I see no harm in keeping something that triggers, um, a, a, a new meeting to discuss that.
So Andrew, I, I agree and I understand that question I have is of 400 cases per 100,000. To avoid, um, ambiguity in discussing this in, in the public, right? How confident are we in those numbers and our ability to, with confidence, communicate that they really are for 400 cases per 100,000? Because it's my understanding that most people are testing at home, they're not making contact with public health. So if we're going to have a gating protocol, it has to be built on confident numbers. If we don't have confident numbers, really interested in removing the gating protocol, because it's going to lead to a, a very interesting conversation. Uh, and we won't have, uh, any kind of, um, uh, underpinning to that conversation, right? If we can't say, yes, our numbers are good, then what are we doing? That is, is my concern.
Yes, I don't, I don't know that it, I, I would, I would be more inclined to agree if, if any, if there were automatic actions, but it's, it's only a meeting trigger. And so a meeting trigger, I would think certainly could include, you know, what does this mean? You know, what's the virulence like compared to where it was before? If we continue to have the, um, the virulence go down. I, I think it's, I don't know that it's even a, I mean, we had, we had gating criteria that caused automatic actions and rules to kick in at certain levels of COVID. And this is, um, this isn't it. I think that, um, so that's why I think it's fine to keep the, to keep the automatic meeting trigger. And certainly one of the topics, if the meeting were automatically triggered, which it probably won't be, you know, would be where are we at with the numbers? What does this really mean? What does this really represent?
James, would you feel more confident, um, if it's listening to just local health, the recommendations of local health officials and what they're seeing in, say, in clinics and hospitals?
Whatever, Sam. Right. And, and I'm not against actually taking action in the face of a renewed virulence, whatever. It's just upon what information, right? And if we know that the numbers are really, really fuzzy, that's being reported on dashboards, I'd prefer something that we can stand behind and explain to the public. That's all.
I get it. Thanks.
Two questions with this. And it's my understanding from seeing, you know, being firsthand in this, that one of the main issues we were looking at earlier was obviously hospitalization rates. Is there data that relates to Brown County hospitals and bed availability and access to that, that is regularly monitored?
Sorry. There is, um, that data is extracted from Brown County Public Health. Sorry. There is. That data is extracted from Brown County Public Health DHS. The healthcare providers are in partnership with reporting that information. I don't have that information, but it is, it is readily available.
And, and just by the fact that they're admissions and they're, you know, there's forms with it, that's going to be incredibly accurate information as opposed to, as mentioned earlier, as far as, you know, some people might not be tested and the information with that, I would assume, correct?
Sorry. That would be more accurate, because that is not a self-reporting or self-reporting statistic.
Laura?
Oh, hi.
Oh, sorry.
You can put me.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I feel like if we have another surge, which I think we know could happen in the fall, that we'll know, we'll see it in our schools, we'll see it in our staff, and then we will have to address it. Does that make sense to you? Like the rest of the board? Like I, I, I am, yeah, there's, there'll be indicators.
And that was the second part of my question. As far as staffing levels and student attendance issues and concerns with it, there's policies set up for that. And when we look at it, and I assume some flexibility, even if we have building subs of being able to reassign them to other buildings if they're possible. And we would look at that as a building by building issue, more so than district-wide.
Yeah, I, we do monitor that daily. And that would be something that if the exec team recognized that we're exceeding a comfortable spot, I would reach out to the board. May I just add, we did ask you to look up numbers earlier and death rate in Wisconsin, Pam? Was it four?
Yeah, I, I looked it up. It was eight as of July 11th, but the average was four per day for the state of Wisconsin.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, I, I agree with Brian's perspective on using the hospitalization rates as a automatic trigger for a meeting, recognizing that the district can report and, you know, see what's happening amongst teachers and absenteeism. But when we're talking about automatic triggers, some of the themes of the public response has been, sure, there's a high case rate, but it's the flu, right? It's not, so if we see the hospitalization rates go up, now we have the basis for conversation, which everyone will understand. So I really appreciate using hospitalization rates as a, as a control.
I'm good, probably, if, if there's, I mean, I would have to see what it is before deciding whether to vote for it or not. But if there is, I, I think there should be something that guarantees a meeting. And there could be other circumstances, even if the automatic meeting isn't triggered, that may require a meeting to discuss it for some other, some other reason. But I think it's, I just think it's good to, the, the automatic meeting is an automatic meeting. So you can't, well, yeah, you know, people might get upset and, you know, there's just nothing to say about it, because we've already declared that it would happen. But if that, if there's a reasonable other method than case counts, I'm fine with that, probably.
Is this being discussed also with other Brown County schools and also other urban school districts or the larger school districts in the state, as far as similar policies that you're aware? So we're all kind of on the same page?
They do not, for the urbans, they do not have any motions still standing. They've gone back to pre-COVID protocols. And we haven't met as a Brown County superintendent team since summer started.
Okay. Any questions? So this will come to the board meeting the end of July. If we want a motion for an audit, did you have something, James?
I just, I want to know, can we direct the districts to provide another recommended motion around case counts for the board meeting? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All righty. Thank you very much. It was nice meeting you. Thank you. Welcome. Okay, we're going to go into policy and governance. The first item under policy and government, governance is going to be the board meeting policy, the committee structure. Mr. Becker requested that we revisit this. We, with the addition of our new board members in April, we reverted from the committee structure back to the work session and the board meeting. But Andrew requested that we bring this to a work session and just have a conversation as to whether or not we like that structure, if we want to look back into, going back to the committee structure. So this is really just an open discussion around how we want to proceed. Andrew?
Thank you. So what I'm interested in is the committee, is the committee structure that, I'll be quite frank, never happened. I, there were a lot of conversations about what this new committee structure would mean, that it would mean new voices on committees, not voting members, but it, there were talks, there was discussions about a staff member on committees. There were discussion, all, all kinds of discussions. Committee chairs being able to have a, have a role in selecting topics and inviting people to the table, inviting different viewpoints to the table. And immediately, from the first, from the very first committee meeting I was involved in, I was told absolutely not that it was. So I think we never tried it. And I think there's some merit in having a, a committee structure, but maybe this, also maybe this isn't the time for it right now either with all the things that are going on. And I would not, rather than, I guess, try to hash it out quickly, I would, I would be okay with maybe delaying a few more months. I think there's a role for the work session. And for those who remember, I proposed that we should have the committee meeting, committee, a committee week and a work session week, because I think they serve two different purposes. Committees could offer members with a particular interest to have a deeper dive. If you were to have committees, say, the second week, have a work session, say, the, the third week, or the first, second, and fourth, something like that. Other advantages are, you know, there are things that are good about the open session, like it has a built-in expectation of a public forum. Our committee meetings did have a public forum, but they were, they were poorly attended. But with, you know, looking at referendum coming up and everything, I think this is, you know, adequate for a few months as well. So if, if others wanted to postpone this, I would certainly be open to that.
Um, I would agree that what we have in place right now is working pretty well, and that we have a lot of work ahead of us with informing the, the community about the referendum, and also searching for a new superintendent. So in light of those, I would like to delay any change for, I'm sorry, Andrew, more than a couple of months. I don't know exactly what, what other people would recommend as far as when we might have this conversation again. But I, I feel like we're going to have a lot of, just our regular meetings and a lot of additional meetings in the, in the coming months. And I know that a lot of people around this table already have a hard time with scheduling and, and being free. So my recommendation is that we delay this. I don't want to say indefinitely, but maybe, maybe talk about it again in the spring. I don't know. I'm, I'm open to hearing what other people have to say about that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Yeah, anytime the, the board wants to bring this forward, it just needs to be addressed by a board member or two, as I assume most topics are. If we want something on the agenda, we talk to the board and, and it's on there. So I don't, I don't see a need for us to set any date with it. You know, if, if in three months, we're struggling with getting the work done of the board, and this might be a better method to bring up, then we bring it up. And if it's not, then, if it sits for two years, then it sits for two years. I think just the, the work of the board will indicate whether we need to readdress it or not. And I, I'm assuming that a lot of the speakers that would have come up into an individual committee would still be welcome to the whole board during our work sessions, and we would get the same information on that. So the whole board is hearing it at that same time.
This time next year, we'll be onboarding a new superintendent. And, and I don't know, you know, exactly what that's going to look like. None of us really do. So in anticipation, I don't know that, I don't know that adding additional meetings every month right now maybe be, would be a good plan. That's just my feeling about it. But again, I'd like, I'd love to hear what everyone else has to say.
I, I think we're going to have a lot of meetings with the referendum. I think we're going to have to be around a lot. So I think wait. James?
So being new, didn't see the committee structure, the read of the policy, I'm, I'm concerned. I don't understand Andrew's position when he says they serve two different functions, because I see the superintendent responsible for setting agenda. Now, the board member paired with the superintendent changes out, right? Because it's no longer the president, it's the head of the committee. But ultimately, I'm, I'm trying to figure out and the read of the policy, how the work of the committee flows up to the regular board meeting, and how that's different than what a work session is intended to do. I, I honestly, I read it, and I was like, these things really feel overlapping. And I, before I could even engage in a conversation, someone would need to mentor me in, you know, what really the differences are. And if we don't feel like the work sessions give us the opportunity to, to do the deep dive, I, I can maybe understand that. But I, I didn't understand the true difference in roles between work session and committee.
And I'll tell you, I, I prefer the work session versus the committee. I mean, I would come, I was the chair of the operations committee, and I would come to the board meeting. And I would say, you know, I was getting budget updates. And I would say, okay, everybody, I got a budget update. These are the three things that were really important to me. But go out and read the attachment, because everything is important. And what is important to me isn't necessarily what is going to speak to you. And that's why I like the board session. Nancy and I have talked about this, and Nancy was going to every single committee meeting, because she wanted to hear firsthand what was going on. I, I personally prefer the work sessions. We've had some really, really needy work sessions. You know, we've had work sessions that we've brought anybody in that needs to come in. So from my, now, if the majority of the board was like, nope, committees are the way to go, we do committees. I, I, I don't feel really passionately. I feel that I get more out of our work sessions than I did out of me attending my committee meeting and then getting updates from the committee chairs at our board meeting. So that's my personal preference. Andrew?
So I just, I just want to make it clear, though, that, and granted, these, these discussions include people who are not part of the board or administration anymore. But no one, you know, you know, there was, when, when Celestine Jeffries first suggested that we, was one of the first proponents of going to a committee structure, that was, that was something that was different than just, you know, if you look at city committees, there are, there are council members, and there are actual staff members of the committee, which we, which we don't have and wouldn't, wouldn't fit in a work session to have a staff member of a committee. That was, that was discussed and then never materialized. I, I would have liked to see, I would have liked to see that. I would have liked to see what education committee could have done if we were able to have the committee leadership and the administration talk about who would be at the table. And I, that was shot down immediately at the very first meeting that I was going to do so. So I just want to make sure, I, I don't think we have tried, I don't think we've tried what the committee system could have been. We've tried a very watered-down version of it, which was, yes, work session with half the people at it. Sure. That's, that was, I'm not saying that was good. I'm saying the initial promise was, seemed very promising, and we never tried it.
I think, I'm going to have a question, which, through the chair, which I'm going to guess is going to go to Melissa on this. Part of this, you know, is, is going to be the dynamic of the current board, and, and who's currently on the board, and, and the work approach that we take with it. And I think that, from what I'm hearing, the committee, I'm sorry, the board, is appreciating the work committee that we have and, and the work sessions that come through. And I'm going to assume that if there was something that a board member wanted on the agenda, and for some reason was not on that someplace in our board policy or through Robert's rules, there would be some process that, that could be appealed and brought forward. And if it's an issue that wasn't posted, I mean, I guess it has to do with the posting and the timing of it. But we receive our agenda far enough ahead of time that, that would be able to be alleviated through the chair.
I believe it's policy, maybe 150, that describes how an agenda item gets put on the board agenda. And it just takes one board member to request that the agenda item to the board president be put on the agenda. Doesn't mean we'll be on the very next agenda as you've determined, because if it does require staff to prepare or do work in order to present. But the, the board policy is, is very clear that there isn't a majority rule that requires something to appear on an agenda. Did I get the number right, Vicki? Hmm, maybe some, what is it? What is it? 150? 171.2, 171.2. Sorry, sorry. I was just on vacation.
Yeah. So now this is, I'll just, this is, well, this, just to cover another thing that can happen here, too. And this is something that I am much less worried would happen, say, today than some number of months ago. But there is also a situation where the board member could request, could request the agenda item. Board leadership could not be all that interested in talking about it and place quite some time in between. And then it is a majority vote that would decide when it would be held. So an unpopular, an unpopular minority view has more of an uphill battle perhaps than it looks, depending on the makeup of board leadership. That being said, I, I don't have any serious concerns about this now in the way that at other points during my board career, I may have had serious concerns about it. I'm not too worried about it now, but it's not just, you know, and I realize you can't, you can't oversimplify it to, if a board member wants an agenda item, they get it within 10 weeks unless it was a repeat. You know, there, obviously, there's some time, you can't keep repeating an agenda item that's been dealt with, but.
Is there, as a new board member, is there a, a procedure where we look at Robert's rules and just the, the functioning of the board? If we have questions that wouldn't necessarily take place in an open working session like this, where it's more of the nuts and bolts of it, are we allowed to do that? Or would that constitute a meeting? And then the whole open records part of it would be a concern on that?
I mean, it's, it's open meetings, so not open records. So if, we, we have had retreats, is that what we call them in the past? And they definitely require the posting requirements, and that they be an open meeting. But we absolutely are able to, I think what you're asking for is more like a workshop, maybe, on Robert's rules, or just exploring the procedures of how the board operates, and maybe put some more formalities in place. We absolutely can do that. We have to post it, but that's not an issue at all.
I, I think that that, I'm sorry, let's follow up with that. I think that's something that might be very effective for us to do as a board here also. So So when we have, when we're continuing our superintendent search, they, those are established. So it's not necessarily that we're changing based on the person in the position, but rather we have these set up based on the makeup of the board.
Within that, would you like to have, if, if we were to do that, just let's talk about that briefly, would you like a discussion about board norms as well? Not Robert's rules necessarily, but just kind of how we relate to each other and maybe some stuff about, it's always good to revisit things about records and confidentiality and all the things that we have to adhere to. I always, I always, I always think it's good to revisit that once in a while, just to remind myself and other, you know, all of us about how we, what we can do, what we must do, what we shouldn't do, you know, Dean, you know what I mean?
When I'm officiating sports, we look at the rulebook and we look at teachable moments and preventive officiating is how we phrase it, of just, you have your policy, you know the policy and, and your enforcement of it. Taking those opportunities for the, the people skills on it. I think the, the priority would be to make sure that we have our Robert's rules followed, board policies obviously followed, and then interpretation and the, and the process with that. I think it would be beneficial, but I think making sure that we know as a board, all of our policies with it, which we've been provided and just the, the logistics with that and Robert's rules on how we can continue to run effective meetings that value our time and value staff members' time and any of the presenter's time as well.
And, and the bottom line for me is that we can always get better, you know? It just a general, general commitment to, you know, to always getting, being better, more efficient, more fair, more all of it. So, and more transparent, more accountable. So anyway, I don't think that's, I think it's a good idea. We can, I don't know sure what the next step on that would be and we're, honestly, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I would be open to that if everyone else is.
All right. Any more discussion on the committee structure, James?
So Andrew, just to be clear, rereading the policy, would it be fair to say that when we revisit this, it's not just a selection of do we re-implement committees? We would really be talking about changing the policy to implement some of the things that you just described as they were discussed, they, there was some expectation, but then they were not allowed to proceed because they're not written in the policy. There's no, the policy silent on composition of the committee and who can and who can't be on it. So really the discussion would be, you know, redesigning what a committee is per policy, which would allow some of these viable changes that you described to take place.
I would say that's accurate, but I would think the, the starting, the starting point could come from, you know, a, a good starting point would be, could come from some of these discussions that happened before something slightly different was put into place, but yes.
Anything else? All right. We'll move on to the last item, or not second to last item on the policy and governance, the independent hearing officer resolution for expulsions. Melissa, that's you.
For the new board members, we have implemented an independent hearing officer to preside over our expulsion hearings. I would say in 99.9% part due to the Title IX regulations that were implemented in August of 2020. If an expulsion involves a Title IX allegation and it falls under Title IX, any discipline issued to the student has to be issued by someone who is trained in Title IX. And that would require the entire board to be trained in Title IX and then kept up to date on that training. As I make this presentation, the new president and the administration has proposed even further revisions to the Title IX regulations, which Ellen still shows up to work every single day, which I'm very thankful for. And so it, it's going to expand the scope of Title IX even further with what is being proposed by, by the Biden administration. So that means that we had to look to an independent hearing officer because that individual is trained in Title IX. It's typically an attorney who serves as an independent hearing officer. And then that independent hearing officer hears the, the case and then makes a recommendation to the board. It still is the board's determination as to whether a student is expelled or not expelled. And then if the student's expelled, what the conditions and then the penalty is for that expulsion. So we're coming back again. I included an update for you because really this year was the first year that we had any expulsions with an independent hearing officer. So on the end of the memo that I provided to you, I included the cost of what this school year was for the six expulsion hearings we had that included the cost of the independent hearing officer and then the court reporter, because we're required to have a transcript of the hearing. So that you have on that last page there. So this would be moving forward then to the July meeting for your, your vote.
Any questions or comments?
Can I just offer one, Don? I, I do just want to say, having, I present the district's case on behalf of the district and the two hearing officers we have have been incredibly patient and respectful and just really, really, it's been great to see them interact with our students and our families and have conducted incredibly fair hearings and I think have pushed the district to do a better job in the hearings and which just then means a, a better situation for our students and our families, having to do a better job on our part as well. So I, I do think that it has gone very, very well this past year.
Right?
And Melissa, these independent hearing officers, they do hearings throughout the state, throughout the region.
So the two, the two individuals are Attorney Dean Dietrich, who is actually located in Wausau, and then Attorney Danielle Carn, who is located in Madison. That name may be familiar to you because she used to be, worked for the state through the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission. And she conducts, she has a mediation and a hearing practice as an independent right now. They, an independent hearing officer cannot be an attorney for the board and it cannot be an attorney for the district. So we really have to look outside of our local area and find people who have not done work for the district or the board so that they are truly independent. First of all, thank you for this memo. It does a really good job of kind of laying it all out and all the, all the, you know, the money and the, how many, you know, the, the chart about how many expulsion hearings, et cetera, is really helpful. But I just, I also want to thank you for adding your insight into how these, these officers have been doing because I sat in enough of these to know that patience and respect and sensitivity are a huge part of that. And so thank you for adding that and letting us know that, that it sounds like they're, they're doing a good job. Appreciate it.
There's no other comments. We'll move on to item C, Rule 422.1, procedures for admitting and attendance of foreign exchange program students.
We're bringing this change forward because the COVID changed a lot of things with respect to foreign exchange students. And there's a number of different ways that we can ensure that students applying to come to the district are proficient in English so that they can benefit from the instruction that they would receive here in the district. It is not just the, the one test of English as a foreign language assessment. There's a number of assessments and the TOEFL, I think that's how the acronym is pronounced, the TOEFL assessment is not available, did I get it right? Okay. Good. That is not available in every country. So just having that one assessment is a barrier to some students who live in countries where that's not available. So working with Julie and Judy, we expanded the policy to allow for more opportunities from students, for students.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Melissa. We'll bring this forward to our meeting the end of July. And that concludes the, what are we on, the policy and governance committee.
Before we wrap it up, I just want to say, you know, I just want to encourage you, Maisie, in future meetings, you've been quiet tonight and maybe it's just because you didn't have anything to add, but always feel, please always feel free to offer your opinion or insight or anything you want to know about any of the, any subject we're discussing. And I should have said, I should have said that at the beginning. I apologize. So, okay. So our last item is agenda setting. We have the meeting schedule. I don't know if anyone has anything else that they want to mention or, okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? I oppose. We are adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.